This is Senator Adam Olley and this is the We Can Do Better Podcast. I'm really excited to have Joseph Hurd. He is the president of the Gross Point School Board. And for all of you who don't know, there's been a lot of change in the Gross Point Schools over the last couple of years. It has moved from a largely uncontroversial space to a really controversial space, to a fighting over school millages, to a like, it just has been a really interesting time. And I am always interested and surprised as in these most trying times, how people often turn to the first black somebody, you know, in old movies used to joke. In all the disaster movies, the world's coming to an end. It's like, yep, there's gonna be a black president. And, you know, I think, Joseph, you find yourself in interesting times in the Gross Points. Do you want to just introduce yourself and we'll get going?
Sure. My name is, as was said, is Joseph Hurd. And I'm a, I believe, 12 year resident of the Gross Points. I'm originally from Saginaw, Michigan, which is about 100 miles north from this Detroit area, straight up 75. And, you know, I came here, became part of the system through my two sons, who've already graduated through the system, and I can talk about that a little bit later if you'd like. And, and I have a daughter also here in the system. And it's just been a process of one of those things where I really didn't plan for it, but I was placed in a space to be on the school board first. And then later on, I was asked to be the school board president, and I accepted the challenge. And, you know, as you said, it's a really controversial time, but I think it's also a time where we can, we being the board and the community, can make a really positive change.
Yeah. And so, I mean, can you just talk a little bit about where the Gross Point Schools find themselves today? Are you doing in-person learning? Are you doing hybrid? Are you doing distance? How's the superintendent transition stuff going? Like, where are we at in Gross Point?
Well, right now, our kids are currently doing hybrid. And with my daughter, who's in the seventh grade, what she does is she goes to school two days a week. And then there's one day where they have, she has six classes, and those classes are done between 8:15 and 12 o'clock on Zoom. And then the other two days, she's just basically doing catch-up work and on her own. And what we're doing is we're gonna be meeting on Monday at a board meeting and voting on whether or not to go face-to-face. And if so, we have a plan that's anticipated to begin on March 1st for the younger kids, and then for 6 to 12 to go full-time, beginning on March 15th.
Okay. And so, that's in line with what the governor has asked all school districts to do, is to try and be back in person by March 1st. Is that right?
Yes. But actually, we began planning that, and we stated those dates even before the government, even before the governor, rather, named that date. And, and what we've been trying to do is, beginning in the fall, and beginning in the fall, we, we started looking at, okay, can we go back safely? And in my opinion, at that point, we couldn't. We didn't know enough about the virus. We didn't know what the real impact would be, nor had we had an opportunity to begin preparing mitigation factors for having, making that transition safely. At this point, we've had, what, four months of school behind us? And we've looked at others, including the private schools, including the parochial schools, who've gone back. And we've been able to begin making that transition. First, on January the 4th, we started then with our hybrid system. And then last week, we talked about it and had a plan from the administration, which was a result of us asking for it, so that we could go back face-to-face.
And so, you, as you bring up the administration, I know the longtime superintendent has announced his retirement. What are we thinking as far as, you know, where the district is going? Are you recruiting candidates? Has a process been set up? What's the plan for the long-term leadership of the district?
Well, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, rather, three weeks ago, we, we'd sat down and picked a firm, or had interviewed firms to come in and conduct the superintendent search. Last week, we voted on who that firm was going to be, and that's gonna be ongoing to help us choose a replacement superintendent. Gary Niehaus, who is the current superintendent, did announce that he's gonna be leaving sometime this year. A date hasn't been announced, but he will be, he'll be complete. His term will be complete by the end of the school year.
Okay.
So, so we're going through, as you can see, quite a bit of transition.
Yeah, no question. I mean, and similarly, there's been a lot of discussion, and even into this last election, of some of your colleagues around which schools are staying open, which schools may close, or any, you know, reorganization. You know, there's always a discussion about opening the Gross Point Schools to other nearby communities. And things like, can you just kind of let folks know where the current thinking of the board is? What's, what's going on? How they can engage in some of these discussions?
Sure. I, when I got on the board, which was a year ago, January, I came in because the president of the board at that time resigned. And, you know, there were 16 candidates, and I interviewed, and they just, and the board at that time appointed me. They picked me unanimously and appointed me. So then, there was a battle going on, really, reconfiguration is kind of, is basically the term. And two of the schools in the district were closed. And, you know, and I understand, understandably, there were, there were parents and others, community members, who were upset for a variety of factors. You know, their neighborhood schools were being closed. They were thinking maybe their property values were going to be impacted. And, you know, there's just that emotional attachment that, that comes with growing up in a small place like Gross Point, and having that be the school that's down the street, and now all of a sudden, it's no longer there. So, so we dealt with that. We were dealing with the transition, which had already, which had already been laid out. And then we ran into COVID. And because of the pandemic, you know.
Talk about a phrase, it's like, we were doing this, and then COVID hit. It's like, oh, man. I was joking with some folks, and they were saying BC. And I was like, you know, most people think about BC as before Christ, and now it's like, yeah, before COVID. You know, like, every time you're thinking about something in the past, you have to caveat. No, no, it was okay for me to be around other people. Like, I'm not wearing a mask because it was, you know, 2000. And you're like, I don't know. Are you sure? You know, it's like, well, you know, we were planning this event. You can't have an event. No, we were planning an event in the past. All right. And so, you know, it's this entire idea of all the things that we were hoping to get done in 2020. And when do we get back to thinking about those things? How does, how do we change? How do we, you know, grow and adjust? And so, you all were in a moment where you were thinking about size and constriction and those kind of things. And now, as the goal and the need for more space has come up, I know some districts have thought about, you know, either opening more buildings, or, you know, doing those kind of things. Has COVID started to impact your planning around how many seats should be in a classroom and things like that already?
No, not yet. Well, I mean, it happened before COVID in terms of the reconfiguration, because we simply don't have as many students as we used to have in the past. So as a result, closing those, those buildings was, was really just being financially responsible, from my perspective. So then, when COVID came, it was matter of, okay, how do we best serve our students? And of course, now you're dealing with how to maintain what I believe to be an excellent education here in the Gross Point Systems with safety. And that's what we've been dealing with for the majority of the year. And that's what leaves us at the place of Monday, voting whether or not we're going to go back to school in March.
Okay. And so, it sounds like there's just so much going on. Like, how are you, as a, what would seem like a fairly new member of the board, leading through these kind of troubling times? What's going on? How, how are people, you know, responding in the community? Like, what's, what's that experience like these days?
I, you know, you have people in, from my perspective, you have people who have legitimate point know everything that we need to know in order to go back safely. So let's either maintain remote, or let's maintain hybrid. And then you have the other side who are saying that we need to be back in school face-to-face. Our kids are falling behind. You have the mental health aspects of just being inside since March of last year for our children. And then also the whole idea of, of parents who have younger children, they have to work. And what do you do with babysitting? Those types of issues. I mean, so, so there are a lot of, and we're getting letters from both sides. And it was amazing, at the beginning of the year, when we first decided, okay, we're not going back to school face-to-face. You had a whole movement that was saying, hey, you know, we were lambasted with, with letters saying, we need to go back now. You know, it's irresponsible. And then now that we're saying, hey, we're, we're going back slowly toward face-to-face. Oh, no, no, you can't do that. It's not safe. So I, I think we're kind of in the right place, because when you're not pleasing everybody, generally, you're getting some things right. Kind of maybe in your position, same thing.
I think for me, so much of leadership in these roles is being responsible and recognizing that I was elected to do the right things, not the popular things. And I think it often becomes difficult for folks to reconcile the two, right? And you have to be responsible to those things, right? So there may, there are gonna be times where I make, and obviously, where you have to make unpopular decisions that are the right things, that, you know, people who voted for you hope that you would kind of make. But that may make, you know, that may mean that at some point, they're like, you know, Joe, I thought you were my guy before, but I realize I just don't like the way you make decisions. It's like, you have to be okay with those kind of things. And I remember, my wife really likes documentaries. And so, there was one about presidents, and it was talking about George H.W. Bush, you know, Bush Senior, and how, when he ran for Congress in Texas, he was vehemently opposed to some portions of the Civil Rights Act, particularly around housing and those kind of things. And he was, you know, obviously very, very famous as having been one of the youngest Navy aviators and had a strong military relationship. He went and saw some American GIs returning from Vietnam, and it changed his mind when he was like, oh, these people who went over served, who wore this uniform, who ostensibly look like us. He was like, they're being denied housing? And they were like, yeah, I can't, you know. He's like, but you're a veteran. And they're like, yeah, but I'm black. So, yeah, I wore green in Vietnam, but when I come home, they see this black skin, and they're like, no, thank you. And it changed him. And so, he voted to support that legislation. But when he went back to Texas, they were like, uh-huh, we did not send you there to do that. So he had this, this, you know, big meeting, and had all his constituents, and they just went off on him. But at the end, he talks about how this older woman comes to him and says, you know, George, I voted for you, and I was ashamed when you did this, but I knew I made the right decision when you stood here and listened and heard and didn't change, but said, this was the right thing to do, so I did it. And if you want somebody who is gonna do the right thing in these moments, you can vote for me again. But if you want somebody who's gonna do what's popular, I'm sure there's another congressman waiting to have my job. And, you know, you look at moments like that, and you're like, if you had been on the other side of that, there's no way he gets, you know, he gets elected president. And you look out at the national scene, as you look out at all these moments. There are a lot of people who are making what they think are popular, trendy positions today that are not gonna age well.
Exactly.
You know, you making decisions based on safety is, would age as well.
Well, you know, the thing is, part of, I think, what prepared me to be in this seat is that I, I worked at the United States Probation Department for 28 years.
That's a long time of working with people who are saying, who are having a rough, rough go at it.
Well, yeah. Well, actually, it's even longer than that, because I, as I, I was thinking about it this morning. I've actually been in the criminal justice system. I was there for 37 years. And starting off with juvenile system. But in, in United States probation, I started off as a pre-sentence writer. And what happens there is that when a person's found guilty or pleaded guilty in federal court, then a background investigation is done. And that investigation includes everything, including their education history, their employment history, excuse me, their family members, and then, you know, the United States sentencing guidelines, also the United States statutes, reports from the FBI, the DEA, whatever agency. And all those things are placed together into a report that then goes to the judge. So then, that judge has an individual before them. So that when the judge makes the decision, and the judges will ask you, okay, so now, I've read your report. I've heard what the United States attorney has said. I've heard what the federal defender has said. Give me your opinion. And at that point, then, you have the responsibility of stating, this is why I believe this decision should be made with this individual. Well, after having first done that for, like I said, for 28, for a good deal of my, of my career, and then later on, being in the position as the deputy chief of the department for half of the state of Michigan, I've been in positions where I've repeatedly talked to judges about, what's the long-term effect?
Say that. Say that again. I think people.
What's, what's the long-term effect of these decisions that are being made? Because what goes today doesn't necessarily, it isn't necessarily the best thing for tomorrow or the next day. And when you're dealing with lives, that's pretty serious. And I found a lot of, you know, compatibility with that in terms of being in this seat, because I have children, and I want the person who's making the decision not to make it based upon how many people are saying yes or saying no, but looking at the facts and saying, what's the best thing for this moment, and what's the best thing for the long term? And that's how I approach this job, just as I approached my job at federal probation.
And as we talk about that, I know people love to, to make, and I think rightfully so, connect the prison, the schools, pipeline it, and to make those, those decision points. Can you just talk a little bit about how your experience in probation has, you know, allowed you to better understand what's needed in some, you know, for our school kids, as, as folks talk about, you know, losing credits, or falling back, or, you know, those extracurriculars, or those things that make a difference when people end up before you with, after having a bad day?
Well, I, I, what really helped me more than anything, well, even before probation, where I grew up, you know, there, there were a lot of, lot of, and I'm gonna say kids, because I was, you know, young then, but there were a lot of people who I grew up around who didn't necessarily end up in the same seats that I'm in. And I don't take it for granted that I'm here. So in doing that, a lot of people will look at the persons on the other side of the desk when I was in probation, and they didn't necessarily relate. I could relate. In fact, when I was preparing reports back in the early 90s, there were a lot of, there were some young men who came through, who I actually knew. You know, so I'm looking at a human being on the other side of the desk, and I'm saying, but for the grace of God, there could go out. So, so now I'm looking at, what can I best do for them as an individual to help them not be a person who we're paying for, but who they can now benefit society? And that school-to-prison pipeline thing is real. I mean, if you have a person who can't read by the third grade, then there's a very good chance that they're not going to do well later on in life. And if you're not doing well educationally, then the doors of life just don't open for you. And let's, let's be real, racism is real as well. So that's one other factor, then, that if you're not prepared, then the chances of your being successful are diminished greatly. So here in the Gross Point Public School, we have an excellent school system. In fact, I can attest that with two of my children who've gone through. My oldest son, Tim, graduated in 2015 from North High School. And he went to the elementary school, to Monty's Elementary School. He went to Brownell Middle School. And after graduating from North, then he went to Michigan State University. And while there, he did quite well. He, he's a good student, but one thing that I tried to instill in them is that you're no different than anyone else. And that when you've been given opportunity, always look back. So while there, he started a, a group called Rising Black Men. And what he did was, it was a mentorship program. And he got some of the, the, some of the upperclassmen and some of the professors together. And then he got these guys together, and they helped first-year African-American students coming in. And in the process of doing that, he ended up, probably, I think, well, maybe, over the course of the last two and a half years, maybe having like 90 kids who, who came through. And, and those kids actually end up, they're great, they're, the ones who were helping, the upperclassmen along with Tim, had a cumulative grade point average of 3.3. Kids who they were helping had a cumulative grade point average of 3.0. And what he did then is he went and he took the, took that group, and he connected with Lansing Public School System, so that those young men who had been helped, they could help younger kids. And the whole idea is this, is that, you know, each one teach one.
Yep.
And because of that, doors opened for him, I believe that doors opened for him. And now he's in his, he's completing his master's degree at University of Pennsylvania. And next year, he's going into a doctorate program someplace. Now, he's not a brilliant kid. He's my kid. But he's a kid who's determined. And I know the boy, but, but, but what he is, is he, he's a kid who knows that, that if he takes care of others, then he too will be taken care of. And the same thing with, with my son Troy, who's in his second year of education at Michigan State University. Bottom line is that I believe, my belief system strongly is that if you're, if you do things for others, then it always comes back around. And, and that's worked for them. And I think being part of the Gross Point Public School System has allowed them to not be intimidated by some of those things that, that didn't have those opportunities of exposure, have been intimidated by when they went to different places. So.
And so, speaking to that, can you just talk a little bit about what it has to mean for some of the black students who live in Gross Point? That the school board president is black, is, and I mean, even what that says about the district. I know for many years, Gross Point has been considered a fairly white community. And for a number of years, was a place that black people did not necessarily feel comfortable being, and certainly felt like there were very serious issues, you know, much like the rest of the country around racism and how black students were treated in the school system. Can you talk about how that's changed, or how, you know, the experiences were different between your children as time has gone on, from your oldest to your youngest, who is now in the school system today?
I, I, I think that the more that people are around one another, and I don't believe it's completely changed. I mean, I, but I, I think what's happened is that those things that people believe are harder to support the more, excuse me, that are harder to support the more that you're around one another. And I believe that to be from, from both sides. In the sense of, you know, there are assumptions made about, about black people. There are assumptions made about white people. And then you meet a person, and you spend time with them, and you realize you're dealing with an individual. And there are, you know, quote-unquote, good and bad in, in everyone. So at, at the end of the day, my belief is that you end up dealing with an individual. Now, we're in, we're in a, we're in a society that reinforces that separateness. But I think that when you have people who have a common goal, then that allows you to come together. And the common goal that we have here is, and one of the main things I'm pointing for is that each kid, every single person within our district, has an opportunity for an excellent education.
And you all have a track record of excellent education. I mean, the, the difference between a Gross Point Public School education and some of the other communities across the state is substantial.
Yes, it is. And, and what I, but one of the things I found was that when my sons were coming through, the oldest first, and a little bit, the one who's now in his sophomore year at Michigan State, a little bit of difference was that my older one was in AP classes. And he found, I think he was one of the few African-American males in those classes. Younger son, a few more. I mean, so there, I, I think, when, when kids come here, there may be, when we come over here, there's maybe a little bit of intimidation involved, until we realize that, listen, human beings are human beings. Everyone has their strengths. And if my strength is in math, then that's not a black or white. That's math. And then you go in and you do what you're supposed to do in terms of, of using the talents and skills that you have, and you'll be successful.
Has there, have you noticed a difference in the teacher population? Are we hiring more blacks, black, black, Latino, people of color as teachers? I know there is an, a Muslim principal at one of the schools that, you know, we talked, and, you know, we talked about some of the, the efforts that he's, he's been undertaking over there to make a difference at his school, and how, you know, his experience was a little different as, you know, they came over and they were like, wait, you're hiring a Muslim fan from Dearborn to be the principal in Gross Point? And people are okay with that. And it's like, that says a lot about where Gross Point has come over the years. And, and so just, I know there's been a lot of data to suggest that teachers that look like their students are more likely to recommend them for AP classes, or to challenge them, or to expect more of them. And, you know, I have a very different experience, having grown up in Detroit and gone to public schools the whole time. All my classes, everybody was black. And, you know, all my AP classes, you know, everybody was black, with the exception of the, you know, one or two white people that, you know, were in my grade, you know, in, in one or two classes. But like, it's a very, you know, I always am surprised at how different my experiences, I'm not surprised, but I'm always marveled at how different that experience is, growing up in Detroit, where all you know is black people in school, right? We read black authors. We do all those other kind of things. And when I was on the school board in Ann Arbor for a little bit of the time, talking to black parents and, and, you know, NAACP and folks, as they talked about wanting black curriculum in schools, I was like, oh, wait, everybody doesn't have to read 17 Toni Morrison books? Like, that's not, that's not, that's not an everybody requirement? And they're like, no, most of us don't read those things too at college. And I was like, well, you know, my, my mom always teases me, because I guess I, you know, you know, you, you had two high school boys, but, you know, they say strange things to their parents. And at some point, I guess I told my mom that I was through with all these books where the man wasn't no good. And I was like, can we just get one time where I'm not the bad guy? One time where there's a positive male role model. It's like, it's like, you know, you read Things Fall Apart. You read all these books, and it's like, dude, is, is anybody making it? Like, and it's like, just, just give me one. Just give me one.
Well, see, but that's, that to me is part of the issue. Those things are real, obviously. I mean, people write about them all the time. They make movies about them. But there's also reality of people who are not spoken about in the African-American community. People who have two-parent homes, people whose children are raised in a responsible environment. And I don't think we're, we're talked about as much. And, and that right there, I think, is, is really one of the issues. In fact, there's, I know, I know that, that, you know, I know someone was behind me.
That's, you know, that's the whole Zoom world, right? Like, you know, cats, dogs, people moving, you know, kind of moving around in the world, you know, we, we're always like, okay. I joked, one of my podcast guests earlier this year, she was, you know, her children were obviously at home. And one of them kind of ran through, and it's funny, because you want to apologize, but you're also like, that's the world we live in, right? Like, that's how you know it's, that's how you know this is the world, and this is what happens to real people, right? Real people have people who also live in their home, who also have to go past that room or into this, because they were not designed for you to do these things, right? And it's a luxury to have enough space that you can have a quiet space where your kids aren't jumping on you for five minutes, let alone 30 or 40 minutes, you know, a day of Zoom meetings. Like, it's crazy.
No, no, you're right. I mean, and, and, you know, what I was talking about before, before my, the interruption here was that, was that I think one of the things that we don't do enough of is talk about our successes. And, and that doesn't mean the other party isn't real. Believe me, I saw enough in the criminal justice system. I mean, there is a lot of, there are, there's a lot of trepidation that's going along with this growth. On the other hand, the success is like, like you going to Cornell, correct?
Yep.
And, and then you avail for grad school. I mean, you're not the only person. I mean, and I'm pretty sure you're exceptional, but it isn't.
As much as I love to think that I am super cool, I, I am a firm believer that the numbers supported a certain number of us being successful, right? So I went to Renaissance, you know, two or three people went to Ivy League schools every year. My wife is, you know, two years ahead of me in school. She went to Yale along with her best friend. And another, you know, my cousin who was in her class went to Stanford. You know, I, there was another girl in my year who went to Cornell and to Brown. It was just three or four people went to Ivy League schools every Renaissance graduating class, because that's how it was. And, you know, as I talk to my, you know, my close friends who were my Cornell cohorts, none of us, you know, none of our parents were particularly wealthy. We were all, you know, mid to lower-middle-class, working-class parents. But there were spaces that were looking for kids like us. The challenge that I see going forward is that space that is, you know, if Cornell's population of black people is in that 15, 16%, that could now be fully occupied by the children of black Cornellians, right? The, and, and that is a challenge, because it does not leave the same level of opportunity for kids like me, right? My parents, my dad was a firefighter, my mom's a retired social worker, right? Like, where is the opportunity for the person who is just trying to make it versus the kids who are gonna be successful? You're gonna be successful no matter what they do, where they go. My daughter is gonna be successful. Lily and AJ, like, they're gonna be successful. And they're gonna have these very unique moments where they've been with people who, you know, they would otherwise not have been able to expect. Like, you know, when President Biden got sworn in, I was like, I was like, oh, yeah, my Facebook photo is Lily and I with Joe Biden. You know, it's like.
Well, no, I mean, in, in, in that right there, we either go from being at the very top or the very bottom. And some, in, in the middle is what's missing from the picture that's presented about us. And, you know, whereas you can find plenty of the middle with, with the, with other people. And, you know, whereas you can find plenty of the middle with the, with the, with other people. In terms of, you know, maybe they aren't with President Biden, but they certainly aren't in prison either. You know, and and that's the reality of most of us as well.
Yeah. And that, you know, that was my parents a hundred percent. My dad, you know, was a Detroit firefighter for twenty plus years and an EMT before that. And was able to raise four children. And, you know, as I get older, I'm like, how did they afford to feed us? You know, and I I'll be having those jokes, you know, you're, you're looking back reminiscing, you're like, people are talking about a thing, it's like, I never had that. I never had that either, but I didn't miss it, right? Like, and I I think as we talk about these moments of of how we get there and moving forward. My parents, your parents, you know, made a number of sacrifices so we could be successful. And so as a parent, what are you, uh, what are you telling other parents who are struggling in these moments who are like, how did they balance this stuff? Like, what's that advice that you have for folks?
Well, well, one thing that I is is what I said a little bit earlier in terms of us looking at our successes. You know, in fact, I was on, there, there was a a podcast that I was on earlier and back in the summer of last year. And it was talking about some of the things going on with the Groves Point Public School System. And I was still relatively new board member, but they included me. So I said, okay, fine. So we're talking on the podcast and they had this, this young lady who was talking about, you know, how she went to South High School. And how, you know, basically how how the the challenges and the struggles that she faced there. And and those things were real, I can imagine that. But then she said, oh, yeah, this is so and so, and she's going to Princeton. And as the, as the conversation continued, then they start, they continue to talk about all the challenges. I said, um, yes, I I'm not doubting the challenges. But this young lady is going to Princeton. Can she, can she maybe shed some light on what she did in order to be in that space? Because that could benefit the audience. And again, that's not, that's not denying one reality. It is acknowledging the other reality, which is that she was going to an Ivy League school from there. And and maybe other kids could benefit from some of the things that she used to navigate the system, because that also is important. So when I'm talking to parents, I'm saying, hey, let's deal with the reality of the challenges. But let's also deal with the reality of the successes and try to replicate those as it would fit you.
Well, that's some uh, excellent advice, you know, as a uh, a father of two, I will keep that in mind. You know, my my munchkins are still pretty small. I have a three year old and three month old. So we're at the, where I think we're opposite ends of the the education spectrum. But uh, you know, I, every guest I have on, I always ask two questions. I always ask, you know, what you're doing to promote your mental health? And what you're doing uh, to stay active. So what are you doing to keep sane and and to keep your spirits up? It looks like you've got a, you know, the big smile, that joy of things are going well in the world. What are you doing to keep it up?
Well, one thing is that I, you know, I would, I I'm, I I have a faith, you know, I'm a Christian. And I I read the word quite a bit. And then not only do I read the word, I try to implement that in my life to try to put it into plain language as to how it can apply to me. And then how I treat others. And and generally, what happens that the more that I treat others well, it seems to come back. And and, you know, so that's one thing. The other thing that I've done is that I started, we left the office and when I was still working, I retired in June of last year, but we stopped working in the office in March. So I was at home for my last three months and I just began walking every day. And and over the course of that time, I think I've lost thirty pounds since then. And
The the real question then becomes, what device are you tracking your steps with? Are you a Fitbit, an Apple Watch? You got a Whoop? What what do you have?
You know, I don't even know what this thing is called. It's kind of, um, it's probably a cheap version, but it kinda keeps the steps.
Oh, man, you gotta step your game up. I mean, I have a a Garmin running watch on my left arm. My right arm, you know, I gotta keep, gotta keep that data going, you know, how are, how are you gonna compete with your friends? Like, you gotta win the step challenge, show me.
Well, see, that's the thing, though. I mean, my my wife is is pretty much into health as well. And and in terms of steps, see, I can beat her every day. And that's all I'm worried about, because after having been together for twenty six years, we've been married for twenty six years, together for twenty eight. I, you know, that that's that's my girl right there.
That's all, that's all I can say. My my wife and I uh, laugh because we're on uh, different technologies. She is an Apple Watch person, and so she's got rings that she's doing and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And for a little while, I had a Fitbit. And all my Fitbit friends were like, no, Adam, we're not playing with you. Because, you know, I'd go run in the morning. And they wake up to, you know, get their steps in and they're like, why does Adam have ten thousand steps?
He says, oh, so so you're the competitive type, huh?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. But I like to believe that I am, I'm the competitive in the good way. So I only get the positive part of the com- the competition, right? Like, I'm like, yes, wanna be better. Like, I'm competing with myself, I'm competing with everyone. It it is an encouragement to be my best, right? It drives me, it brings the best out of me. And, you know, I'm also very okay with losing. Like, I wanna win, but I respect the fact that there's always someone bigger and faster and smarter and, you know, by playing, you are gonna lose. And I think that's a really important part of becoming an adult. And I think one of the most valuable lessons I've learned in sports is you are gonna lose some. And the only way to balance that is by doing your best. And if you do your best and you lose, go work harder, you know, and then maybe you win the next time.
Oh, yeah, that that, no, no, as simple as that sounds, as simple as that concept sounds, it's a concept that not many people are getting, as you probably know. You know, don't lose gracefully. I mean, that type of thing.
I I I will say I learned my lessons hard. I was uh, I was not a graceful loser as a child. And I have an older brother who is six, five and eleven years older than me and probably one of the funniest people you've ever met. So uh, I earned my grace the uh, the hard way.
You said, as he took you out and continually taught you your lesson in terms of winning or losing in this case, huh?
People often are surprised because I don't play basketball. I, like, it's it's something, I'm just not any good, I don't think I don't play. But I remember my brother, uh, when I was little, you remember Patrick Ewing? Uh, you remember how Patrick Ewing would would post up people and he had that kinda like drop step fade shot that he just, so my brother taught me how to do this shot, right? Like, and he would, you know, work with me and like, boom. And so I get it. And then one day, like, when I I really, like, I lean in and I kinda fall back and I have a shot just perfectly, the perfect arc. And he jumps up and dunks my shot and I was like, I'm done with this. Like, I am, I am so done with this as a thing.
Well, we'll, we'll see now, in my case, you know, I'm a little bit older than you. And I'm looking at, I remember the time when, because I have, my ex had five children, it's just that that three are the y- three younger ones I'm talking about, but I have a a forty one year old and a thirty one year old. So when my thirty one year old was coming out of high school, we were playing one on one and we split all the time and that was cool and stuff. Then when my my guy who's twenty four came along, I'm playing him and I was like, I'm not gonna be better than him and he's in tenth grade. So I beat him and then I quit. And he ne- I never played him again.
That's the ultimate dad move, right? Like, that is how you do it. So I have a nephew who is a a plays football at Eastern. And when he was, I don't know, thirteen or fourteen, um, so I'm about twelve years older uh, than him, so. No, I gotta be older than Adam, so maybe sixteen years older than him. So he's about twelve or, you know, twelve, thirteen. And he's talking stuff about how he's still, you know, how he's the fastest. I was like, no, I'm still the fastest in the family. And we race down our block. So my parents live on one corner of the block and his mom lived at the corner of the block. So my sister lived at the corner of the block. And so it's, you know, about a, about a hundred meters, right? And so we cut that to about a sixty. And I dusted him, like, you know, not like, uh, not like just dominated, but like, I win respectably. You know, maybe by about ten meters, you know, something like that.
It wasn't even close.
Yeah, but uh, that was it. That was the last time we raced and I have other nephews and, you know, uh, folks like that. And we had this conversation and I was like, and one of, one of my younger nephews was like, oh, no, I'm I'm the fastest in the family. I was like, no. Chase is the fastest and then me. And he's like, I could bitch, I'm like, I'll, I'll, to my other nephew who just turned uh, seventeen a couple of weeks ago. So he picks a length that's too long. And so, of course, I dusted him. Now, he he's winning at the beginning, but I am faster. I catch up. And then Chase is like, Phoenix, you picked too sm- too long of a distance, you gotta get shorter. And so then we we do it again and he's winning, like, he is winning the, we're going maybe forty me, you know, forty yards. Winning the first thirty three yards. Like, and the first ten is dust, like, it is not even close. Because, you know, I'm not, I'm not a fool, right? Like, I'm in my thirties. I'm not trying to tear my Achilles or pull my hamstring, right? Like, that initial out of the blocks is how all old, you know, how all thirty somethings have a catastrophic injury.
That's true.
I beat him in the last five, like, the last five feet like this. Like, that old man, like, nah, just just lean through, ru- ru- run all the way through. And he he thinks he's won and everyone's like, no.
So you didn't win, son.
That's it. That's it. We're no longer doing this, buddy. See you next time. So I uh, I look forward to that moment of uh, dominating my children until it's like, you gotta know when uh, I hold it over them. But you gotta keep working, gotta stay in shape so that you can push that point out as far as you can. You don't want the last time you can beat your kid in a race to be when they're five, you know?
Alright, so you can now run really, okay, that's, I quit. No, you don't want that at all.
It was a, you know, it was really a pleasure having you on. I look forward to having you back. Thank you so much for for participating and sharing a little bit about what's going on in Groves Point, you know, a little bit about you. I know in these moments of uh, uh, the pandemic, it can be very difficult to interact, particularly with elected officials at every level. And to, you know, get in touch with, you know, community folks. So I really appreciate you giving uh, our audience the opportunity to get to know you a little bit better. And to see what's going on in Groves Point. Do you have anything else that you want folks to know?
No, I I I really appreciate being given the opportunity. It was, it was nice to meet you. And in terms of Groves Point, we'll just continue to try to make it an environment where every child here gets the best education possible. And that's really what I'm aiming for. And and I believe we'll achieve that.
Well, that's great news. I'm very excited. Uh, this is Senator Adam Olia and this has been the We Can Do Better Podcast. I just wanna remind everybody to continue to take COVID nineteen seriously, to social distance, to wear face masks. And whenever you are presented the opportunity to get vaccinated, that you take advantage. Uh, I was vaccinated just recently and, you know, we posted a video talking about that experience. I hope that you will all uh, avail yourself of every opportunity you can and continue to be safe. We are only gonna get out of this pandemic when everybody works together responsibly. So have a great weekend and looking forward to talking to you soon.